We've got flags and everything.
Already go, okay.
It's enough campers.
Yeah. Okay, it's time to go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have a quorum tonight. Have you folks had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
We have a motion to accept those. Second?
No, second.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, who we all have on the agenda tonight?
Uh, I guess not Steve, can we say, did we? Um, can I do the trash bins first?
We're gonna start with the, um.
Oh, the live stream, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
All right, as you can see, we are live streaming tonight. We have to by law be live streaming, uh, all council meetings starting July first. So our July seventh will definitely be live streamed. Um, and this is due to Indiana Code five dash one four dash one point five, two point nine, requires by July first, twenty twenty five that all, uh, local towns and townships, uh, broadcast their meetings and record them and keep archives. And we do it, uh, on YouTube. And to access it, you can go, one, you can go to our website, and there's a link on our website at the bottom, you click, and, um, it'll look like that is what you're looking for. That's the icon you're looking for. Town of Oldenburg, and it's got the, uh, the picture of the town. So you click that, and you can also go to oldenburgindiana.org, which is our website, and it'll have a link there. So you just click that, and you should be able to get to it. And the archived meetings will be viewable at, um, youtube.com at Oldenburg, Indiana. So if you want to go back and look at a past meeting like this one, uh, you can get on YouTube and click at Oldenburg, Indiana, all one word, and you'll get today's meeting. And that is all I have to say about it.
Thank you very much, Monica, for putting it together. Got a successful thing a month ahead of time.
A month ahead of time.
Very good, thank you much. Um, yeah, I guess the first thing on the agenda then would be to take a look at the, uh, trash and recycling bids and.
Okay.
See if we can come to a conclusion on that or.
We went out for three bids, and we received two back. Um, we went out to, uh, Best Way and Rumpkey and, um, Waste Management, and Waste Management, uh, no bid. So we would see the Best Way and Rumpkey. Uh, Rumpkey, as you can see on the form there is, um, for the next three years, sixteen dollars a month, um, for the first year, sixteen eighty, for the second year, and seventeen sixty-four for the third.
Well, that's per month, per household.
Yes. And then the, um, the rate to take care of the, uh, eight cubic yard mixed recycling containers for both of them is two hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents.
For?
For both, uh, the eight. Yeah, there's three.
Okay.
Close three containers would be two hundred and seventy-two fifty, to do it twice a week.
Okay.
Three containers twice a week. Is that the current schedule?
Three containers twice a week, yeah.
So what are we paying right now for those recomplanters per month?
For recycling, a hundred and twenty-five per.
Is it per container?
Yes, per container.
Okay, so it's one thirty-six, twenty-five times three.
Right, alright, okay. Alright, so right now we're paying three seventy-five, something, three seventy-six or something, okay. Alright, and what are we currently paying for trash pickup?
Two hundred and twenty-one, that's at fourteen eighty-eight a year.
Fourteen eighty-eight, okay. And where are we at on the schedule for, do we pass the trash pickup on to the individual households through the water bill?
Yeah.
A hun- at a hundred percent?
Yeah.
Cause I know it was escalating.
Yeah, but Aaron was gonna get back to me, um, because some people have two containers.
Right.
Um, and I haven't gotten clarification on that yet.
Okay, but right now, individuals are paying, we're all paying fourteen eighty-eight per month.
Yeah.
Per house, okay. But the recycling, the town picks up the tab on that a hundred percent, I agree. Isn't that right?
Yeah.
And then there's also an, uh, an alternative bid that Rumpkey submitted was, uh, I asked them to submit for per household recycling containers. So this would be for a ninety-five gallon recycling cart, um, that would be, uh, collected, and it's four dollars per unit per month, the first year, four twenty per unit per month, the second year, and four forty-one the third year.
And how many times would that be picked up?
One time per week solid waste connect.
One time per week.
Then, this is, um, every other week. The recycling will be collected every other week at that rate.
Okay, so every two weeks?
Right.
For the recycling, at four dollars per unit, fourteen twenty to four forty-one. Okay, so how, uh, let's see. So money-wise on that, four dollars times, let's say, two hundred, around number two hundred, eight hundred dollars a month, versus the way we're doing it now would be more like, let's see, like one thirty-six times three?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
So that three seventy-five, three eighty-seven.
Thirty-six times three, four fourteen.
Four fourteen.
Okay, so about double, something like that, is what individuals would pick it would be.
But then, that would be passed down to households.
Well, it isn't now, though.
Recycling.
Yeah, the town picks up the tab for recycling now. So we have to decide if we want to continue doing that.
Okay.
Or if we want to pass it on to the residents. No good way to do that, the way we're doing recycling now.
Right.
But, um, this would be a way to do that if we choose to.
Okay.
Alright, so that's the entirety of the Rumpkey bid then, okay.
And then the day was Monday, just the way it is now, and the holidays remain the same.
Okay, so, and the holidays, they're only, Dean, I see yours is nowadays.
New Year's and Christmas, obviously.
Just the two days, right? Okay, have you met Dean?
No.
Interior room?
You can probably talk to him.
I have.
Okay, alright, thank you for coming to that.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, Best Way, um, their bid came in. We'll do the individual household bid first on the last page, was thirteen dollars per dwelling for the first year, thirteen forty-five for the second year, and thirteen ninety for the third year.
Okay, and that's, again, once per week. What were the, um, what were the holidays?
Their holidays are reversed name, uh, there's several. Uh, New Year's Day, Memorial Day, July fourth, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Day. And they will run the next day after the holiday.
One day delay after holiday, so there's six holidays there. And Dean, if we continue with Rumpkey, we, it would still be Monday pickup like it is today?
Yep.
What was the pickup date?
Friday.
We do Friday.
Yes.
Um, if that makes a whole.
And it's right here in yellow and pink. Right there, uh. They highlighted them, right here. Between the hours, it said there.
Oh, there he is, okay. Alright, so how does their recycling work?
And their recycling is three eight-yard front-load containers, uh, serviced twice a week would be two hundred and eighty-five dollars a month. For all, for all three, yes.
Okay. Alright. Um, just to add a little bit more to, I don't want to get off too much on the tangent, but on the recycling, we had some complaints that the bins were, were getting too full, and, and we determined that the reason for that is there's a lot of, a lot of corrugated, and a lot of corrugated is not broken down. It's, you leave the boxes whole, it would take up way too much space. So I looked into, um, working with the sisters, they've got a compactor, and they're willing to work with us on, on, uh, taking our corrugated. The, the only caveat to that is that it can't get wet, or they won't, they're, they're fire-worn by it. Um, and they can only take corrugated, which is not a huge deal. They would be open to, if we had a, we were just talking, if we had a trailer, uh, that they could pull behind a, um, either pickup truck or a SUV or something, to pull over to their, um, baler, they would be willing to do that, and they have to offload it by hand anyway, so they could sort. Anything that wasn't corrugated, was just flat cardboard, which they can't accept, they would just put it back in the trailer, and then bring it back and put that into the recycle, at, at our sewer plant. So that is an option, if we come up with some way to keep it dry and, for them to try and pour it, which would, again, it's a, it's a tangent, it would probably keep us from increasing from three to four.
Well, there, there was one more option, uh, that Best Way offered, and they weren't asked to offer it, but they did, uh, is a one thirty-yard container that they would service, um, on call or on schedule at one hundred and fifty dollars per pole. So you got twenty-four yards now, and you'd have thirty, and a hundred and fifty dollars per pole.
Okay. The only bad part about that, Dave, I think you probably remember that.
And fill up in the front.
We had, we had a very big container like that, I don't know if it was thirty yards or whatever, but it had sliding doors, like three on a side.
Mm-hmm.
And it was very limited, the whole top, I think, was completely covered, wasn't it, Dave?
Yeah, that didn't work out very good at all.
You couldn't, you couldn't get the recycling in the corners or in between where the doors were, and the doors were limited in space, large things you couldn't, large cardboard corrugated, even if it's flattened, was hard to get in.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, it was not very efficient. Um, we, we did the poles just like that, but we were lucky to have them a little over half full, because they'd be completely filled with doors. If you dug around, really messed around, you could see large voids in anything, but that wasn't.
People break down the boxes, it wouldn't be no trouble at all, because I go down there a couple times a week and break up the boxes, or lay in there, shoot, by the time we get done, you got a third of, one of the containers empty. Nobody wants them great big boxes, this sort of whole thing in there.
Now, one, another thing we have to kind of decide on, there's two different options of, of doing the recycling, the curbside, which limits it to, um, townsfolk only. We know, everyone here I think knows that outside folks do use our recycling bins from time to time. Um, it's a known fact, we can't, we can't keep it from happening, and I'm not sure we want to, I think it's a good thing to recycle. So we have to decide whether we want to let that continue. If we go with curbside, that eliminates that completely. And then those folks don't have that opportunity to use it either. Now, whether they should or not, you know, that's just a question.
Wonder how bad, Best Way is, I see they only want plastic bottles, two kinds, and Rumpkey takes all the plastic bottles, so I know everybody throws all kinds of plastic bottles in there now.
Yeah, are there other differences?
Yeah, there are.
What they collect?
What they would take versus what Rumpkey takes? I think that would be the only difference.
I think that Best Way only take one and two. I see it in someplace.
Is there any limits to the plastic that Rumpkey takes?
Well, well, they take it.
Expand it, it's kind of like the butter tubs and diaper tubs, expand to that. Before using it, I heard it, it's almost all plastics now.
One or two. Are you guys getting rid of all that wet cardboard?
The volume that we sell.
Old places won't take wet.
How do other places take care of their, I mean, I'm sure there's other places that have limitations on what kind of plastic that they use. Uh, how is that monitored, and are they just sorted at the site?
I, I don't know. I don't know, maybe you can answer that.
Yeah, Rumpkey, we take, we probably have the most extensive list from the Midwest, we think. Uh, it's just that our site, it's a technology to sort it properly. We now do it by cu- plastics by color, by milk junk, it's sorted out now, it's all technology, AI technology, it's our plant separates everything. More technology, the more separation, the more we can offer in the program, so.
Is there, um, I don't know if you can do this individually, but I'm sure that there's things like in our recycling that you can't recycle. What percentage?
Overall.
Overall, what percentage actually gets recycled?
Cincinnati plant, we're about sixteen percent contamination that gets weeded back out through the plant, back to the landfill, which is also one of the best in the Midwest because of our education and what we do, and, well, sixteen percent, so.
So about sixteen percent of what, what we have in our bin?
Public drop sites are probably a little more, that's an average for us, including all the curbside programs we have. That's our overall plant percentage.
Alright, any comments from the floor on recycling and trash? Would you like to add to?
Question or comment?
Yeah.
So you're about the two containers that Rumpkey now will provide. When we first got the Rumpkey service and asked for a second container, uh, they set us up promptly, and we're paying on that, uh, by instead of the court separately, so we get well picked up, but you, the town's only seen one of that bill.
Okay, so on second containers, the individual picks up the tab directly to?
Right.
So you pay directly to Rumpkey on those?
Yes.
Okay, I was wondering where, I wonder how it works.
Question on the recycling, if you go to curbside at each home, what size containers?
They're ninety-five gallon, just like the.
It would be a ninety-five gallon, okay. Both Best Way and what?
Um, that's what Rumpkey quotes, that's what they didn't quote, curbside.
You see seventy-eight gallons of, of small containers?
Mm-hmm.
They would just not be adequate.
Now, these will be the same size as your trash. And, uh, Best Way would charge the town five dollars for each additional cart. And then we would bill.
So each additional trash?
Ninety-five, yeah, ninety-five gallon container would be five dollars.
Five dollars per month?
Yes.
Extra, and then we would pass that on rather than?
Yes.
They work directly with the customer?
Right.
To pay. Okay. Alright, any more comments from the floor?
If you were to do the, like, nuns thing, and with the garbage, like, logistically, that would be just like a lot on somebody, and they don't know which person, is that? Does somebody would have to go through it?
If we did the card, the corrugated with the sisters?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they've verbally agreed that they would do that.
Yeah.
Uh, they would pull that, if we put it on, let's say we put it on a trailer, they would pull the trailer when it gets full, if they're done, they can go, go down there all the time anyway and check it out. Um, and they would pull up to their, their baler, and they would offload that, they have to offload it by hand anyway. So they would offload that into the baler, and as they run into, uh, flat cardboard that's not corrugated, they would put that to the side and then put that back on the trailer, and then we would, either they or we would put it back into the recycling bins that are at the sewer plant.
Could there be like a drop-off place at the sisters, where they could put corrugated stuff?
They, they do not want, uh, everyone and every person coming in all hours, day and night, onto their property to, to drop off corrugated.
Yeah.
We did discuss that, and I, I kind of agree with that, I'd.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't need to do that if they're gonna.
Or maybe there could be like a separate, like, one of the bins could be for plastic, and one of them could be for paper, so it's just like easier to separate. Or, like, I'm not on the Village Voices Facebook thing, but I think that that's how like a lot of stuff is communicated, or whatever, of course, so I was wondering if, like, anything has been posted on that about the corrugated stuff, cause if, if I knew that before, I would have maybe just like, I don't know if burning it is okay, but like, got in, like, and used it in my garden, like, I, I knew that that was an issue, or like breaking it down more, I probably would do something different then. I don't know, so if it could be like, somebody could talk about breaking stuff down more, but I think this is talked about like a couple meetings back. So, um, also people are lazy, so.
And we do have burning ordinance, by the way. That's probably not a good option either.
But paper, is paper okay? No, nothing? It's a bomb room. Can people have bonfires?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Within limits.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to ask, uh, if the town has any public properties and whether or not they allow, uh, metal detecting, looking for old coins and relics and stuff.
First time the question's ever been asked that I'm aware of. Uh, yes, the town does have some properties, um, the, uh, playground, the Montreal Park is town property, the area right around this building is, the area around the firehouse, um, is, and then also the green space across Harvest Branch Creek along two twenty-nine as you come down the hill into town.
Yeah.
The issue that he's driving at, though, is whether it's regulation, the problem, the reason why a lot of people have regulations for that is that metal detecting sometimes involves digging into the soil.
Yeah.
Getting those out. And so, uh, I would say the policy is probably, if you find it laying on the ground, is one thing, if you're digging up the park, that's not completely. And that's, that's the way a lot of feel, they don't want you digging.
Right.
And, and stuff, and really when you're detecting, that, uh, if you're looking for old stuff, it's not gonna be on top of the area.
Right.
But we get rid of the trash, you know, like when we do it, if it's a can or whatever, we, you know, I carry a five-gallon bucket in the back of my vehicle, and when I get my pouch full, I just walk back and throw the trash there, so if it gets dug, it doesn't go back in the ground, whether it's something good or bad.
Right. I, I think I can speak for the three of us, we would not want you digging into the areas. I mean, if we need to come up with an ordinance to, to prevent that, we would.
Well, that's why I came here to ask.
Thank you very much without, before doing it, thank you very much for asking.
You know, we're, we just try to find old towns and, and, you know, they both work, I don't work anymore, so I go through the week and try to get permissions for us to dig.
And what's your name?
Mike House. I live over in Osgood.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and, uh, like I said, we, we drive, a lot of times, we might drive two hours just to get to a place to detect, you know, cause it's, it's hard to find places. And plus, I do a lot of door knocking when I go to an old town, I'll knock on people's doors, you know, and ask about detecting them. But, yeah, I want to come here. I went over to the other building first, I kept waiting for somebody to show up, and somebody came by, and said, I think they're over at the other place.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you very much for asking, but. Alright, any other comments on the recycling or trash? Dean, do you have anything to add, or?
Do you have any points for attending tonight?
Well, we'll see, huh? We'll see if we get a, a motion here.
Thanks for the last three years of business here, yeah, I think our service has been impeccable, from what I understand from Morgana, I hardly ever hear from the town, so.
And it has been, right, I, I agree it has been. Um, your predecessor, I can't say worked out that well, because I, I would get the, I would get way too many calls where things weren't picked up, or whole sections of the town weren't picked up.
Is there any feeling out from you here, um, if you would like to have the curbside recycling? Is that something that, that you feel like is, the town wants? Uh, or do you think we should just continue what we're doing, and maybe next cycle, talk about curbside? Any opinions?
I would like curbside recycling.
You would like?
I would.
Okay. I'm just the opposite. I'd rather, I'd rather take my things down there.
One more container in the garage.
I agree with Danny.
Didn't the whole topic start because of the fact that the bins were overflowing? And we get a lot of participation in it, so I'm wondering if, like, we're talking about, how do we get people to realize you need to break the boxes down? And will that help? If we try that first to communicate breaking them down, and then maybe our bins won't be overflowing?
Maybe we, that's what we need to do, is do a better job of educating people that they need to be broken down.
Right.
Uh, the Village Voice, any, any way that we can get the word out, um, get the word out, to break your boxes down, put it on the website. And then try that, see how it works.
This is located at a public facility, or a town facility here, correct?
Yes.
There, would it be worthwhile to regulate it, maybe instead of outside the fence, put it inside the fence and have hours for the recycling? That way, we don't have people from Batesville and Osgood, everywhere else coming and dumping in the middle of the night and filling the trash.
Do you guys get a lot of trash in it, or is it all?
I don't know, I don't know if you can answer that, I'm probably.
You're much Morgana's, I don't.
I'm down there quite a bit, I know Dave's down there quite a bit. Uh, I don't see a whole lot of trash, I, I see truly recycled things in there.
That's all I notice down there when I go to.
Yeah, I think they do, people do a pretty good job putting the right things in there, but they're very poor about tearing down boxes and flattening those.
Yeah.
Today's point, if, if everyone did that, we'd have plenty of space in those three bins, constantly.
We just need to do a better job of getting the word out.
Right.
To break down the box.
Only trouble we had with you, one week and a half, you forgot to pick up the recyclables, and we had a mess.
I think if, if there was a sign too, cause I don't think there's any signage up.
We did have a sign.
Okay, and like breakdown boxes.
We did make a whole lot of difference.
They're already there.
I didn't, I'm sorry. Yeah, I've never had an issue, I, I'm kind of tall, so.
Send two guys down to that thing and clean it all up.
Is our service Tuesday and Friday? Is that right?
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, Tuesdays and Fridays, yeah, I saw it was full tonight, I stopped by.
Yep, have to pick up tomorrow.
The, the cost of the bins would be translated to a homeowner, if you did curbside recycling, then both do.
I, I would say yes, we would probably pass that on, so.
That would, it would end up saving the town's town budget about three hundred bucks, and would make the, uh, personal bill go up from about fourteen dollars to about ten dollars.
Would be, um, more like twenty-one.
How often is the pickup? Is it also once a week?
Twenty.
For the recycling?
It would be, it would, today, it's twice, twice a week. Those three containers down at the sewer plant are picked up twice a week today. If they, if we went to curbside. If they, if we went to curbside, it would be once every two weeks.
Okay, I was gonna say, I don't think we would fill up a whole thing at that.
I think both places are once every two weeks, right, Brian? For apples, apples.
Okay, I got another question then. If we go to the household or household, do they have a minimum amount? Because I would assume there's going to be households who don't want to participate or do you automatically make everyone have a recycling? Will they have the option to do a bin or not?
I don't know. It really, it's really not stated in here. Is that is? What is participation? Town or a city and you ask for a contract for recycling, it's a hundred percent of the houses. They don't have to participate. We want to bill you for all the houses. That keeps the rate low. So if you only get thirty percent signed up, my bid would not be four dollars, it'd be seven or eight or something.
Okay.
So we get paid for everybody, we want the whole town. They can opt out. They don't have to recycle. They can say we don't want a bin, just not recycle, but we bill you for all two hundred twenty houses at that rate.
Okay.
That's a good question.
That makes sense.
It's not unlike somebody that decides they just don't want to put anything out for trash. They don't have anything out for trash, but it's still gonna get billed. Recycling.
Right. Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'm open for a motion. On first of all, I guess, which way we want to do recycling and then secondly, which of the two?
I make the motion that we keep the recycling the same as it is.
To the second?
Yeah.
All in favor on that? I agree.
You people not break them boxes down, there won't be no problem. Plenty of room.
All right. So I'm open, a motion on which of the two bids we go with. And take the contract is ends at the end of July, or end of June?
End of June.
End of June.
Looking at the rates, the the best way rates are definitely lower. Considerably.
Yes, they are.
Even with the uh three yards, two hundred eighty-five dollars a month servicing them twice a week. Considerably lower.
That's for all.
But this is Friday pickup.
Right. There'll just be a transition time if we went with that. I think everyone would get used to it quickly. I think we had a chance, transition last time we went with you guys. We had to change days.
So I would make the motion to accept the best way, yeah.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Sorry, Dean.
Thank you then, thank you then.
Thank you very much for bidding.
So I'd suggest uh June thirtieth is right around the corner. We typically would come back and pick up the trash carts. So it's a Monday. So we typically would come pick those up the last service day. So we bring a truck after the route, bring the guys that run through, we try to pick all those back up. So I suggest getting the best way to make sure they're able to deliver the same day. So they'll be airplane as of now, yeah, June thirtieth is a Monday, so.
So June thirtieth is a Monday and you would pick up, that'd be your last pickup.
Yes.
And then the very next day you would.
Separate couple of trailers and trucks would come and pick up all the carts, all the two hundred twenty containers out there. We'd pick them up after the route. All that same day.
Oh, so that same day?
Yeah.
So we need to let everyone know then they need to leave their carts out, even though they're empty.
It should be done one day. It's only two hundred twenty. We should be able to pop on one of the things that. So just making sure best way to be here when you've got a cart, so.
Right, right. So will you get with best way then maybe tomorrow and see what kind of notes on when they can deliver? And then maybe overlap, they may be able to deliver right away. Again, thank you very much for the good service the last.
Thank you, yeah.
Number of years.
More or less than you're paying with us now, so.
Yeah, I I was surprised that uh when Brian brought this to our attention, it was that much of a difference. I don't think the last time, in fact, the last time I handled it and best way didn't bid last time.
Yeah, I think us and Waste Management were fifty cents apart.
Yeah, you guys were close. You you guys were very close. I think you were a little bit more economical than than Waste Management, if I'm not mistaken.
I think best way is hungry. And the bid below our current rate is very unusual anymore. It's probably been ten years since I've seen that, so.
So that's our trash pickup or recycling?
That's for trash and recycling.
Okay, so they don't take the the one type of recycling? They only take one and two, right?
Right. Yes. Okay. Anything, anything else on that? If not, what else do we have on the agenda?
Speaking of contracts, let's go ahead and sign our lighting service agreement.
Okay, thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, let's, you know, all about this. Only one page?
Yes. The utility clerk is requesting a pay raise. Do you want to discuss that?
Oh, thank you. My printer ink was gone. I just got it today. So run us through how how it worked with Erin when we hired her.
We, the last salary ordinance we did was to split the year in half. So she was going to get a two dollar increase until June thirtieth and then it would increase two dollars more beginning July first. So her salary for this year would be ten thousand eight hundred until June thirtieth and then after it would be twelve thousand.
Okay. And that's we agreed that the two, the two dollars and then two dollars now.
Yeah.
Is what this is about, right?
Yeah.
Is this an addition to that?
Trying to address it this is for a second for you guys. Uh, in our, we talked about it in our utility board meeting and um we looked at at the twenty-five dollars an hour rate, so we asked her to keep track of her um her hours and she multiplied that out. So it came in at at less than that. So we thought, what what are our options? So we looked at, there's companies that you can contract out to um to collection or your utility bills. The one that was recommended, the name is uh Minol, M I N O L. They do that. It's five dollars a customer. So that's three hundred fifty-two customers times five was seventy, hundred sixty bucks. That's, we still wouldn't have anybody answer the phone. We wouldn't have anybody buy to make deposits. Ten meetings, two minutes. So after looking at that, looking at her not making twenty-five dollars based on amount of hours she's working, uh I think her ask is for eleven hundred. Uh, but speaking on behalf of the utility, we we feel that's we recommend it because it is a highly responsible position.
I didn't really understand what the, what, why she put the uh, what's the name of the company?
Minol.
Minol, why that was in there, I didn't really, it wasn't explained. So that's what it would be if they were doing the work.
Yes, if we, if if we didn't have her.
Yes.
And we have to, if she just up and leaves, we have to, we have to get our bills paid. We have to have bills collected. It would be, what would that be, six hundred, yeah, an extra six hundred sixty bucks? And then we would still have to find somebody to answer the phones, make the deposits.
Do the minutes.
Do the minutes.
Everything.
Um, yeah, and she, she feels a lot of phone calls, like, I didn't get my bill. I didn't get this. What about this? I'm digging here. What about this? And then she divvies out those calls and she uh the thing that I, we didn't think of this, but uh good for her, she instead of having two phone lines, we now switch to one cell phone line. But she did come in, I was forcing her to come in here all the time. You know, just just, well, is there any, anybody leave a message here? Well, now she has a cell phone and she gets that message right away. And if it's urgent, she calls somebody, hey, was that leaked? You need, who do we need to call? If it's a non-emergency and she can get back with them, you know, if if they call on Saturday night, for example, didn't get their utility bill. Well, she can get back with them on Monday. But if it's something urgent, she's right there. So, you know, I don't know why we didn't think that sooner, but she did. So uh she's done well. We we feel she genuinely worth it. So we also looked at, I think that this might be a year or better ago, I took about half a day and looked at because it's public information, looked at all the other local um utility companies like the Mileys, the Osgoys, the St. Leon, or yeah, St. Leon, um St. Paul, Laurel, places our size you know, comparatively, and uh we were the lowest. So we feel like we should be somewhat competitive. Uh, and we want to retain somebody that's responsible and it's it's just not a position that you just divvy out. And then she's also asking just for a future for a three percent raise, future years, which we feel, you know, reasonably aligned.
John, are salary ordinances, does that stipulate anything that we have to abide by?
You gotta stick to it. Yeah, whatever the ordinance says is what you have to pay unless you're gonna amend the ordinance.
Okay, so what's the ordinance read now?
Literally twelve thousand for the rest of the year.
Okay, but it's in regards to the three percent increase annually, we can't.
To that.
We can't do that.
Yeah, that's the kind of.
Look at that every year.
I do as part of the budgeting process.
Gotcha.
Which is coming up in a month, basically.
Right.
Funny.
So I mean, I, yeah, I mean, you can't, no, you can't enter into a contract. You certainly can't enter into a contract that extends beyond your term and office.
Right.
And uh I don't think that the state border accounts will let you enter into a contract with automatic
pay increase.
Raises beyond the next budgeting cycle.
And that that makes sense. We weren't aware of that, but it does make sense. Sorry about that.
You know, I'm just, I'm not saying it's, not saying you're wrong.
Right. It's something we can recommend higher to your budget.
Yeah.
Right.
But then, so every year at the, at the budgeting time, then we would decide what we're going to do.
Right.
Just like you do with every other employee.
Right, right. Jeff, this is, uh, if I'm not mistaken, this is salary and not an hourly.
Correct, it's salary.
Has there been any efficiencies with the new software that she's putting in less hours or she will be putting in less hours?
There's been some efficiency there, but the demand for, there's just more demand. There's more, there's more calls, there's, there's more reports, there's.
So the software didn't?
It's way more demanding than it was.
Software didn't help us?
It it helped and it's gonna help, it it should help better later. The nice thing she's trending towards is uh do an automatic billing. And that would, I mean, so many people, customers have been asking for that through the A E voice system. That's not available yet, but she's been sitting in on seminars and training to try to get to that point. So our software could be, could be compatible with that eventually to do that.
When you say more demand, you mean the billing software makes more demands or people, more people call up and say, where's my bill? My toilet's leaking and so forth.
Yeah.
They found her number. They found her answer and figured it out.
And eleven hundred dollars, is that equate to two dollars an hour that we suggested?
That'd be more.
It would, so it would be thirteen thousand one hundred annually, right?
Yeah, because I think originally, originally last, I think last year in January, we asked for a thousand dollars instead of that eight hundred.
I think.
And use with the nine hundred. Is that correct? Is it nine hundred now? I think it is. So after, after we told her to track your, we said, hey, just track your hours. So, you know, we really know where we're at. And when she was tracking ours, it comes into under the twenty-five dollars an hour that we you know, told her we would pay. So she's, and even at eleven hundred dollars, it's less than twenty-five if she's working the same amount of hours.
When she hired in, it was ninety-six hundred a year.
So it would've been eight hundred times twelve, yeah. So when she asked for a thousand in January, it, she was given nine hundred with the intention of going to a thousand in June. But after tracking her hours, we're suggesting to make that eleven hundred.
Okay. What do you guys think?
Well, I was, I was talking to the uh former utility clerk.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and she she thought it was worth every penny. What what she used to do when she knew what the job entails. Um, and she thought it would be worth it.
And just to add on that, Brian, we owe a great deal of gratitude to Ruth.
I was just gonna bring that up. I mean, it's almost like we're we're slapping her in the face.
Yeah, they did this for a lot of years. It's kind of a family thing with with Paul and Lois.
And that's what she told me, that that was a family commitment and she, it wasn't about the money.
They would, like they would get hurt or damn to go pick up the the bills. They would make the deposits. They did all the running for her. They had everything, like all the envelopes opened up, everything was in order. So when Ruth got off work, she could do it. They never received anything for doing all that, but you know, you gotta figure that's somebody else is gonna do that. And we, and anytime you see Ruth, thank her for generous.
Well, that's, that's my train of thought. When I'm seeing Erin asking for these raises.
Yeah.
And Ruth never did. It's almost like, how did Ruth, how did Ruth react when you approached her with that?
With what?
You, you said you talked to her about raises and she.
No, no, we never talked about the raises. We were just talking about the job.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Okay. Okay, I mean, yeah, if it's, if it's worth that, it's worth that. I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'll say it. Yeah, we almost decided last time we were gonna do it this way, didn't we?
Yeah, but at a thousand dollars, I think you'd sell eleven hundred.
Right. We was doing what we decided back.
All in favor? Okay.
So you need to, so you want your voting to amend the salary ordinance?
Yes. Okay, we have to.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm trying to, so we'll have to, we'll have to actually put together an amended salary ordinance so you guys can vote on it next time.
Got that? All right.
And that'll be about the time we're doing the budget, right?
Yeah, July, August is when that's, it's kind of so. Yeah, you guys will be deciding things like, what do you want to pay in attorney next year? What do you want to pay the cops next year?
What do you want to pay the attorney?
We're gonna pay the clerk next year.
I think that was it. Um, did you want to talk about Serpsey's?
What's that?
Serpsey, who's not here?
No, I thought he was, I said he was gonna be here. No, that's, let's not, let's not do that. Um, the only other thing that I had on the agenda was uh. Um, the only other thing that I had on the agenda was, uh, I've been asked to just remind everyone that it's, uh, fireworks season. And, uh, um, apparently, is there a, uh, an ordinance, Franklin County ordinance for fireworks, are you aware of? We've been through this.
Yeah.
We were through this last year.
Was it a county ordinance or did we have to find a state statute on it? I don't remember now. Because somebody was complaining about, uh, some resident setting off huge piles of fireworks in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think the concern was that the, the debris from the fireworks was falling on people's roofs and they were kind of hot.
Right.
And they weren't staying within the.
Excuse me, Danny.
Yeah.
I looked at the state statute on fireworks today.
Uh-huh.
Indiana code twenty-two, eleven, fourteen, six. And basically what it said, so allow discharge fireworks on your own property. And, uh, you can do it at eleven o'clock during the week or normal days. Holidays, you can do it at midnight.
Yeah.
And I'll start at four, nine o'clock in the morning. And if I went to research, that's twenty-two, eleven, fourteen, six.
But it doesn't say anything about where the debris falls?
It has to stay on your property. So if the debris falls on somebody else's property, you're liable.
The debris is supposed to stay on your own property.
Right.
Hmm, okay.
That's what the problem was last time.
It is what the problem was last time.
Yeah.
So, uh, she, she just asked me to just remind everyone of that and.
Yep.
So I just did.
Yep.
Anything else on the agenda? Okay, uh, old business. Um, the railing, uh, have we decided how many emblems we want to put on the railings or if we want to put those on, uh, the new railing? Or, you know, the railing out here. The Oldenburg Crest, very similar to the one that's on, uh, Vine Street Bridge. I haven't, I haven't had a look at it yet. Well, I can go out. I think it was four. I, I did count. Like every other section, starting with the end sections or skipping one? Skip an M one and then. Okay, I'll count those. Uh, next question, do we want them on both sides? And then like hold it together, just on one side and attach them to the rails?
Stupid question. Does it really visible from the other side on the road?
Oh, yeah. You'd be able to, you'd be able to see them.
Anything but the end one.
Oh, no, the whole, the whole wall. You can see the whole railing coming down, Amber Hill, Amber Road Hill. I would think you want on both sides. Both sides.
They're pretty good sized from.
Yeah.
It's like on the street, they have holes or where is this?
What's that? There, there, there's a wall right here now. New wall with the railing.
Okay.
Right outside that.
Um.
I'll check.
You're familiar with the, uh, Oldenburg Crest emblems on Vine Street Bridge?
Okay.
It's a black silhouette of the, the spiders.
Yeah.
We're wanting to do that same thing for this way.
Cool.
Okay, I'll go out for some bids on that. Um, the, uh, federal grant for the street, there's nothing new to report on that whatsoever. Um, Jeff, any news on renovating the walking bridge?
Uh, we met Brian Stevenson. Uh, and he said he could do the work. Uh, it would take a lot of work. And he, I said, we're not gonna hold you to, I said, we're just doing this for budget right now, uh, because he talked about, when you look down the middle of it, the deck is straight, but off the side, there's, there's spaces. You know, well, we've just been a small child or a big child could chop right through them. So the other thing is a safety issue with, uh, if, if more people are gonna be crossing that, uh, for the trails, normally you gotta have space, spacing like, like this railing here, four inches apart.
Mm-hmm.
So that would require welding every four inches, um, some rods, up, down, be like one inch. Either three quarter inch or one inch, you suggest. He also suggested for the weight, uh, and for the span, that's, it spans fifty feet, to add two more I-beams underneath it. And then if you recall, on the top of it, there's two channels. And, and there's a gap between them. And if you're not, if you're walking along, it'd be really easy for somebody to catch a ring finger in, in the cracks and, um, or just, you know, just catch something in between there and then it gets narrower in spots. So he suggests putting like a, a four by four, uh, channel all the way across the top of that. So those, those are good suggestions and it's all stuff that's in his wheelhouse and he's done work here. He's done a lot of renovation.
Right.
Historic work. So I, I feel he's capable of doing it. Um, but then he came back and said, you know, the more I look at that, he goes, I, I can do everything that's needed. Um, however, he said, I think for the town, safety aspect, that an engineer should spec out something and goes, and then I'll build it. Uh, we had engineers look at it. These are probably top of the line engineers because they specialize in, they were recommended to us by historic landmarks. And they specialize in, in historic bridge renovations. Um, so they gave me a quote of like twenty-eight thousand bucks to do engineering.
Just the engineering?
Just the engineering.
So that's for like maybe like a old bridge in this one. It's the black one?
Yes.
It's not that old.
No, this is.
It is. It's real. Is it, it's not the one that, is it the?
Walk Bridge.
The Walk Bridge.
It's the black one?
Yeah, the black one.
Did they just paint it and so it looks not as old?
That, that bridge was built between eighteen ninety-seven and nineteen oh four.
Okay.
And we'll be there with that too.
And we just painted it.
So, and then, and then looking at, at, uh, Brian's estimate, he said, just, just ballpark. I said, what are you, what are you talking, we're not, you're not turning a bid. I said, we just for budget, what are you talking about? He goes, probably about twenty thousand.
Oh, my lord. So you're in it for fifty-eight thousand now.
Instead of welding between the posts, could like a grate, it'd be less aesthetically, maybe, but like some type of like mesh instead of in between each post.
So where we're at is, um, a lot of unknowns. We know it needs attention. We're, we wanna, if we're gonna do something, we wanna do it right. Uh, and I can understand Brian's, uh, point is, you know, I, I can build everything you want. But I don't wanna just do it and, you know, if something happens, he's not an engineer. You know, he's, he's a mechanic and a, a painter and a welder, fabricator. So I can go back to the engineers and say, can you give us a really skimmed down and lowest thing ever? Or we can contact some other bridge engineers? These, these guys are highly sought after for bridges for historic renovation. May, we don't, maybe we'll, don't need these guys. They're very interested in it. They love it. But maybe we don't need them. Maybe, you know, our budget tells us we need to find somebody else.
I think they did the bridge in seven, didn't they? Yeah. For that, which I think you remembered Eddie saying once.
Yeah.
So they, they're top of the line, but come some price with it, I guess.
Yeah.
Maybe you talk to a local engineer just to see if they say something that their response might run the gamut anywhere from, geez, you need a bridge engineer, don't even talk to me. To, sure, I can engineer that for thirty thousand bucks. I, I don't know. Maybe that's the next step. Talk to some local.
Structural, structural engineer.
Right.
Something I think we was, with this project starting, uh, right after Freud invest on the trails, it would be ideal to, because they're gonna have to close the bridge anyway for safety in the, in the construction zone. So it'd be the most ideal time to work on it. Um, but that's, you know, that's near it pretty quick. So maybe we push really fast and like get any information in the meantime, run it by you guys. Try to keep the ball rolling a little bit, see if we can come to a conclusion in the direction.
Yeah. How long was, what was the duration of the engineering piece of it alone?
Uh, he, he didn't say. I don't know. He didn't say.
Yeah, we ought to, I mean, it would be nice to get moving on at the same time.
But we'll, I know we need more information, but we'll, we'll try to push.
All righty, well, thank you very much. We'll ask again next month. Um, let's see. Uh, nothing there. We talked about. Cassie, I had you on the line here. Have you and Bob come to any conclusions on your tree planting?
Um, they're already planted, guys.
You planted them all? All right.
But if you, I don't know if any of you go to Oldenburg Conservation Club, they took a lot. So I don't know if you guys have seen them, but it's like at the entrance. So if you're nosy, you can go out there. We planted the right side with a tree planter, which I've never done. So they did cut off some of the roots for that. So I don't know, on the right side, I'm scared of those a little bit because the root stock was cut off. But on the left side, I would have planted them. And I think out there, there's like three hundred. So that was like Oldenburg's planting. And then Batesville's like at the Plex across from the YMCA. Um, there's a place where coal hunters and the railroad tracks come to see. Um, that's on the backside of Baxter and that, there's like a part alongside a trail.
I saw those today.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a little planting there. And then both campuses planted lots, so we got it done.
How many, how many all, all together?
A thousand seven hundred.
Wow.
So many. And they're not all only in those spaces because some people took some and some organizations took some, but yeah, a thousand seven hundred.
Wow. Very good. All right, next thing I had on old business and, uh, it just popped up. Someone asked a question and it's been, I've been kind of forgetting it. Um, fire plug renovations. Wasn't there an effort that we, one of you guys had found somebody that was gonna?
Meet with her on Friday.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Gary and I, we went through town and, and kind of prioritized which ones needed like now, which ones are all offered a little bit. Which ones are most highly visible. Um, so we're gonna meet with her on Friday and, and get started.
And who, who is?
Thirty-five, so.
What's that?
I think we're at thirty-five.
Thirty-five fire plugs?
This is the way he's gonna paint them with funny, gonna repaint them with funny clothes, similar to what they have.
No, we got it nailed.
They're on historic figures, aren't they?
Well, like a lot of them are, like, people who would have been in Oldenburg, like, were, yes.
Yeah.
Character, yeah, characters from, from local lore.
Yeah, cool. Who, who is?
We thought we'd just let her have a little artistic freedom within guidelines.
Sure.
Yeah.
And what's, what's her name?
Uh, Leah Walmsley.
Leah Walmsley. All right, very good.
To jump correct me if I'm wrong, is, um, now you don't need any kind of a, uh, work permit. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. That is correct.
That's all I've got for old business.
Just, it'll be utilities, but not the old.
That's all I've got for old business. Did, um, Gary and Jeff want to give an update on the heritage part?
We've got a chance to be on TV. They've waited all night.
Yeah.
I've not been discovered. I've not been discovered yet. I'm getting older. I'm losing my skills.
So, um, the council had asked us for good reasons to stay in contact with the OA on the court, the multi-purpose court. And because we have the project of the, in our next level trail. So, uh, this is just really an opportunity to give you a real quick update of our last meeting with OA, which is, uh, represented by Jason Walkie, who has the three students, Maria, Emily and Kira, had that opinion before. And so we just met this past Friday. So it was myself, Jeff, Jason and, uh, Councilman Clegg at that meeting. And so, uh, what we wanted to do is just give you a real quick update about some key discussion points with them. And the purpose really is just to really collaborate with them in concert to the bigger project of the trail down there. And as you know, they're focused on the refurbishment, the restoration of the court. So basically a couple of key points that we took away, then, uh, Brian and Jeff feel free to add anything you'd like. But to keep it high level, one, uh, we had a discussion about the fire pit, you know, you, you remember that that was one of the things on the original plan. Uh, Brian did a nice job talking about some of the concerns of the liability and security. And, uh, Jason readily agreed that that's something that we should table and really let's just focus on getting the court where it needs to go. And so, uh, we're not going to be the fire pits. Uh, the other thing is, is that Jason gave us an update that he's at fifty-five thousand dollars in fundraising so far.
Wow.
And that they've also submitted for two more grants through the RCC app. And, uh, for ten thousand each. And then I'll have a couple of other fundraisers through the summer, including, uh, selling, uh, baked goods at the farmer's market. And also they want to apply to the Rising Sub community foundation later on in the summer. So they're keeping the pedal to the metal to keep raising funds for the court. So they have fifty-five thousand and plan to keep that going. And then we talked a lot about, uh, the layout of the court because it's time to do so. And this kind of dovetailed off our last meeting when we were here talking about, uh, what, what do we want to do next? With, it was during pre-construction meeting. And we had HWC here and Aaron and Brian Chehan. And we were talking about what are some of the options? And we came up with a proposal from that meeting that we were interested in. And when we met with Jason Walkie, we talked about it further. We think we have one at least. This, this team is excited about, but we want to get your thoughts as the larger council group here. The other thing, uh, that you recall is that, uh, if we wanted to add to the existing court, just another, uh, ten feet by a hundred feet surface elongated on the south side of the court, that we could facilitate a full-size basketball court and also three pickleball courts. So we were short by ten foot, basically.
Oh, to fit all that in to the footprint?
So we just added it to the existing footprint. We could get that. And then, uh, Mr. Leising reached out to Jeff and gave a, a rough estimate of twelve thousand dollars, uh, in addition to be able to accomplish that goal.
To add the extra ten feet.
They have to put base down and excavate all that. There's no base underneath that.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
So, uh, some current actions that's going on is, uh, we're writing down the process of obtaining quotes. So we kind of see our to-do list here. And I won't go into, uh, any details, but if you have a question, please let me know. One thing of interest is, uh, we're going to have this Friday at two o'clock, any pickleball enthusiasts that would like to meet us down there at two o'clock to look at the plans. We expect you to be there off screen. We're, we're just gonna show the plans and make sure we're not missing anything. We reached out to these folks in the beginning. Angie Harmar, she's the director of YMCA during the creation of their pickleball court. Uh, Sarah Happner, who plays all the time, did ask Gary. And Debbie Craig, who is the teacher coach at OA and a, and a big, uh, pickleball enthusiast. So we just want to get their feedback. We're still on the right track.
Absolutely.
On the second page, and this is really the, the key point that I wanted to, we wanted to share with you tonight, is, uh, when we met with Jason and, uh, Brian was there and Jeff and I, uh, we were looking at the, the, uh, court and what we had come up with from the pre-construction meeting. And all we wanted to do is, this is a rough draft, admittedly. It's not drawn to scale. But basically it shows an outline of the full-size basketball court on one side and then three regulation-sized pickleball courts. The basketball court, three-year formation is a regulation NCAA of, what is it? Fifty by ninety-foot long court. So it's regulation with enough room to have out-of-bounds, you know, so not crash into a fence. And then we have our three pickleball court laid out. Uh, so one thing we also did was talk about, uh, what we thought would be needed fencing around that. And so, uh, in yellow, that represents where we believe there should be a fence. So what we have here is around the pickleball court, uh, we're suggesting an eight-foot fence. However, in talking to Angie Harmar, she's gonna double check because that might be six foot at what they put at the YMCA. So we'll find out. But we thought it made sense to case the three pickleball courts with a fence, eight foot. Have a gate, you'll see, uh, three opportunities to enter the pickleball court area. One, uh, uh, on both sides and one kind of in the middle across from the basketball court. And then also, uh, have a ten-foot-high fence at least along the, uh, court here, along the creek side, which is the east view here.
Right.
Uh, along with the. Uh, along with a little bit of a wing that could probably go back to a eight-foot or a six-foot.
There wouldn't be any fences required in between the pickleball courts themselves?
No, not side-by-side here, it, it would, it's okay to do that, you know, can you see that though, without the pickleball or the fences in between?
Yeah.
Um, Brian and Jeff, any other things to point out about this plan now? Again, this is rough draft, not actual, but if we think we're on the right track then, uh, then we would want, want HWC. To take this and then kinda put it to the proper scale.
Sure.
Then we can use this to go get more accurate bits for siping and fencing. Uh, and we're also pricing out net nets as well. Do we want permanent nets? Do we want flexible nets? We just wanna get all priced and then we'll come back to the council and give you the final recommendation.
Okay. The, the ten-foot addition on the south side, is that going either through with the swale that runs along there or the drainage arrows along the south side?
That swale happy moved a little bit further south and.
There's enough room to, to do that, not interfere with the nade hole or anything like that, I think.
So when we talked to the OA students, because they did have, uh, uh, the fire pit was a lot in their heart. But we explained to them, you know, the, the legal aspect of it and, um, the fact that if we had ten feet on. We could get you three pickleball courts instead of two. But, you know, at, at the additional twelve thousand, they was all in favor of, yeah, we would much rather spend twelve thousand on this whole project and get three courts. As opposed to only having two, so that was kind of a win-win for them.
Oh, I think it's, it's, it's a great layout.
We were just in Franklin yesterday and they have several courts and they were all full and people waiting to play.
Really?
Yes. So having three is better than two.
I think you're definitely on the right track.
So our next step is to have that meeting with some of the pickleball enthusiasts, uh, fine-tune this with the HWC if we're okay with the layout. And then we'll come back with, uh, a project update every month about how this coordinates with a bigger project with the trail, so we're all in concert.
And if I remember right, this goes in before the trail starts?
They'll be ex, uh, yes, they'll be excavating and blacktopping. All that excavation will be done prior to the trails. And then when they start blacktopping, I'm sure they would do that big area.
Which was part of the plan.
Yes.
So the equipment's there to maximize efficiency.
And the timing on, I know the trail wasn't gonna start till after Freud's Fest. Does this start before Freud's Fest? So this would start after Freud's Fest?
Yes.
And once this is completed, then they start the trail. Okay, so the trail might be delayed a little bit because this is first, or they might do them simultaneously?
Oh, yeah, they'll, they'll do excavation all at one time.
Okay, okay.
You don't wanna interrupt parking for the Freud's Fest, that's the least.
Right.
The one thing we did discuss moving forward is once these ports are, are redone and nice, they're repainted and restrapped. We're not gonna allow parking on them.
No.
For, for future, we'll have to have that blocked off.
Well, the, the, yeah, the fence will conclude on the pickleball side.
On the pickleball side, the reason we wanted it that open on the other side here on the south side is that hopefully in the future, we see that pavilion. And we thought that pavilion being on that corner, that open spot would be a nice area for, um, lawn chairs, seating.
Yep, sure would. Okay, another thing that, um, um, it's gonna cost some money and I don't know, maybe it's covered. Actually adding the, uh, putting the basketball courts or the, the posts back up. Uh, re- some, re- re- putting those in and also, uh, assembling the fence, is that included in?
Those are what they hope to get out to you.
That's gonna be an add, adder at some point, right, okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, those are all in under custody, but y'all are on the list.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's going along very, very well. Thanks for the update, thanks for the hard work on it. Anything else on that? Any other old business? I don't know.
There wasn't any lighting plans at this time?
No lighting planned? Okay. No. Okay, is there a reason why?
Well, it, though, it's the why, that they're used all the time. And especially in the summer when it's hot, people are playing at night. So just to think about that, uh, it does add expense, but you also would wanna probably plan for that. When you're doing the construction, so.
It's good, but you'd be running underground electric, there is electric on that hillside.
Yeah, there is. There is.
What do the neighbors think about this, you know? Especially, I mean, the lighting piece especially, if we were to go to people playing pickleball in your backyard at midnight. So, but it is a.
Something to consider, question.
Well, one thing was brought up when, with the trails, cause and, and every trail in there, the, a trail rules that, you know, we wanna come up with. And most of them that we've looked at is trails open dawn to dusk.
Yeah.
So if we wanna, you know, keep it all the same, you know. It's a, or to open dawn to dusk as well, you know, we'd be consistent, it's something that, I think now.
Alright, um. New business, I don't even have any new business.
zoning.
Zoning. Got a new.
Yeah, that's the April thirtieth, uh, solar facilities revision to the Franklin County Zone. Basically says that if you're gonna have commercial solar, it's gotta be at least a five-acre lot. And can't be more twenty feet tall.
So basically they're just asking all the towns to adopt this.
Yep.
And it really doesn't pertain to us because we don't have a open five-acre lots to put solar onto.
Correct.
Alright, so we need a motion to accept, or not accept, but, uh, to make this change, this ordinance or to accept this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Same, okay.
This is just, this is the last, the latest step in that big revision of those rules that the county's been going through.
Alright, so just go back to Kate then?
Yep.
Alright.
And I have one item.
Yes.
Um, it was brought to my attention that the, behind the fire station, the entrance to the kitchen. Um, when we rent the shelter out, when the shelters rented out. Uh, sometimes there's elderly people who've used that back entrance into the kitchen. And there's no, nowhere to grab to, when you're walking in and out, if you, if you're in a walker or something. It's, it's hard for them to get up into the kitchen, uh, from the shelter. And I would just have a suggestion to put a rail there, some kind of handrail.
Okay. Why would people be going, okay, so they actually use the kitchen, they rent the kitchen out to the farmer and dude? But people, would there be a reason they would be going into the kitchen?
If they're working inside the kitchen, yeah.
Going in there, okay, I got you. I don't, I'm not opposed to putting one up.
I think that'd be the fire pit corporate, cause they get all the money for renting it out.
And it's our building though, it's our property.
It's also back to this business about it, you can't make changes to it without, without getting permission from. Can't make substantive changes to it without getting the historical approval. Depending on how much of a railing you want to put up, depending on whether or not we're impacting that issue.
So more before we make that change, we'd have to contact the store folks?
If, if, if it's a big enough change, we, we would. So, are you talking about?
Define big enough change?
Well, are you talking about like, the devil's, every case is gonna be looked at on its own merits. Is this something you're talking about putting in just like a grab bar on the wall for somebody to grab and pull them up one step? Or are you talking about making a?
I think it'd be a rail down the side, yes. I think it's only two up there.
It's not very many.
Well.
It's not a ramp either, is it? Steps, right?
Oh, it's just that. I think you have to step up twice.
Two steps. Not much of a rail.
I'll go by and look at it.
Okay, then you'll be the sir.
Uh, we'll give you your opinion.
Alright.
Okay.
Very good.
I'll give you an opinion as to whether we need to get permission.
Alright. Sister, since you're here, have it, have you heard any more about our door? It's been very quiet on this side.
Right, I think, um, our expectation is that the July meeting, uh, Kevin Brown will probably show the site.
At our meeting here, or, okay.
He wants to come and present the site. So we're still, uh, doing a few little, we're trying to save as many trees as possible.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we know we have a certain number of parking places that have to, you know, according to COVID, but.
Right.
We had the opportunity to show them which trees were more important than others.
Mm-hmm.
So we haven't seen that revised site.
Gotcha, okay.
That's, we're very close, I think.
Sounds are progressing yet. Gotcha, okay. Anything else?
I do have something.
Yes.
I came down here for speeding.
And who are you, I'm sorry?
My name is Ben Brock. I live right up here at the top of the hill on two twenty-nine, otherwise known as the Speedway.
You live real close to me then, probably. On the two twenty-nine going towards Batesville?
Yeah, I literally at the top of the hill.
Oh, right next to Seth? Shields, no?
No, uh, he's here.
Oh, that's right, okay.
And then I'm, I don't know, two or three houses.
Do you have the turnaround?
Yeah, I've got the U-shaped driveway in front.
Oh, okay, got you.
Why are we not writing tickets? That's my question. Why are we not writing tickets? I had no idea that we had three officers, I was under the impression we only had the one.
No, we've got, we've got two that patrol, um, Doug does not patrol in town, but can you answer?
I'm sorry to hear the question.
Speeding?
Speeding?
Yeah, why are we not writing tickets?
Why are we writing tickets?
Yes.
Okay, when I'm there, they're blowing forty miles an hour. Right, but if I'm not there, I can't see it, I can't write a ticket. Okay, are you gentlemen had the radar unit there?
I am.
You did nothing wrong?
I know.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm aware.
I gotta complain on that my street and I subject out.
Yeah.
Okay, however, like I said, I don't, you see me or not, I said in none of this is gravel pool, quite a bit there. And like I said, when I'm there, we're not speeding.
I've got, I've got semi trucks blowing past my house over fifty mile an hour.
Okay, well.
I'm sorry?
Or so is myself or Eric there when this happened?
No, but I mean, it's.
Yes.
It is, it's not like it's a, it's a every once in a while occurrence, this is every day and night. People are blowing past my house over fifty mile an hour. I've got sheriff's deputies on film driving through there at forty-nine mile an hour.
You know, I'm not denying, I don't know.
I, uh, I, I'm just asking for, you know, all sorts of safety purposes, me pulling in and out of my driveway with my children in the car. Is a gamble every time I do it.
That you wouldn't be on the, it would be like you'd have to do something to the road to like.
Yes, the speed table would be great.
Like rumble strips or something.
I'm good, I'm noticing, I'm noticing the same thing, I'll sit down here at a gas station. And I'll run radar and it picks it up right at the top of the hill, you know? And I very seldom get them ever getting that fast. If I do, I'll pull them over down here.
Well, you guys have, you, you have records with the, with the speed limit sign that you put out as to how. What the speeds are going through there. And I would tend to believe he's right, cause I live just a few houses up from you, where the camper sits along the road.
Yeah.
I believe.
You know, like I say, Danny, I'm not denying it.
No, 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 what I'm saying is with the data you have off that machine.
Okay.
Have you ever thought about approaching NDOT? Saying we, we're having difficulties controlling speed through there, can you manually do something to the highway right through there?
I never have, but again, I try.
I mean, it's worth.
It's taken forever to get a stop sign by the post office.
Well, yeah, not. Not a stop sign.
Do we have one of those radar units?
Yeah.
Can we set it up there at the top of the hill?
It's there, it's there a lot.
I'm seeing it down here by the stop sign.
It's right by my, you know where I live.
Yeah.
It's been on that sign by my garden multiple times. Yeah, it's been out there multiple times.
Always does it document the speed of time.
Right.
It does not document the license plate number or the vehicle.
Well, that's what everybody had a problem with, with my videos, it did. I got, I got more feedback from people in Batesville complaining that they should be able to speed through. The problem is, I also had a sheriff's deputy respond to an accident across the street from my house. Tell me that it didn't matter because they speed past his house too, that's what he told me.
Would it be appropriate for, for Bill to send that data to NDOT and as a?
Worst they can do is say no.
I mean, do you think that's a, a good response or a good, good thing to do?
Is it possible to, um, get the thirty minute, thirty mile per hour speed limit backed up further?
That's, that would go into Batesville, that, cause the size is right there.
Yeah, there's one at the very top of the hill.
Or not slowing down fast enough. All of these issues are up to NDOT, cause it's a state highway, yes. NDOT can do any of that, but the only thing we can do is say, would you, would you consider it?
Right.
We did, we did that, that trouble down here, got one with the, by the post office. We've had people go through there all the time and it took us, we went to NDOT and it took forever to get that stop sign up.
Yeah, so in other words, yes, possible, but it's not gonna happen overnight.
It's not gonna happen overnight.
Right, yeah, I guess that, I have years.
Yeah, changing the speed limit like doesn't usually, like, won't stop somebody from speeding sometimes.
S-curve and then accelerating up over a blind hill where my driveway is. Same way with coming up the hill, it's blind all the way until you level out at the top and. I, I can't tell you how many ti- how many times I pulled out of my driveway and there's somebody on my door or in Rick's driveway. I've had, I've had them blow around me in Rick's driveway because they can't slow down. And that lends that, you know, there's a handicapped woman that lives there. And she walks in and out of that car in the driveway and they're, they're skirting her car, I mean, throwing gravel.
I talked to, uh, Terry Mitchum in Brookville, he's the police chief up there, and I talked to the police chief in Batesville and like, um, mains.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, what their strategies are for reducing speeds in their towns. And we discussed several different things they've tried and, but there wasn't anything that. Keeps the speed down, once, once you, if you, uh, increase enforcement in a certain area, once you leave and they know you're gone. It's back to the way it's always been.
Feedback I got on that post was, is if the cops aren't there, then you don't have to follow the law, I said, be careful what you ask for. Because if the cops aren't there and people don't have to follow the law, it's not just speeding, right?
Mm-hmm.
It, it, it got pretty. Eye-opening to the disregard for our community. And most of it came from outside the community and I believe that that's what's going on.
People going through town.
That live here and know that, I have kids that walk up and down this hill to go to the store. Come down into the community, fish in the creek and, I mean, it, it's dangerous. I, three years ago, it wasn't this bad, it was not this bad when I purchased the home. And it has, it seems like it just keeps escalating. And now I've got semi trucks blowing through there like that, then they'll hit the Jake break at the top of the hill here. And ride it all the way down through town, I, I listened to it all the way down through town. It's, it's just a safety thing and in the couple of close calls, I drive a neon yellow Ford Ranger. I mean, you cannot miss this truck, it's, it looks like a billboard. And a guy told me that he almost hit me because I must not have had my headlights on. If you didn't see my truck buddy, the headlights. If you didn't see my truck, buddy, the headlights didn't matter.
It would be good for Bill to contact Indot.
Yeah, give them, give them the data, you got off going past my house or. I don't know if you had to go in the other direction somewhere.
We're going in one direction, basically we're out of town right past your house.
Yeah, yeah.
We find, find a pole mover.
I can put it on a pole again down by your place.
And do you have the data for the north end of town as well?
Yeah.
Please.
Do you have the data for the north end of town as well?
We did have, yes. And I did make one traffic arrest on that the other day.
Because I suspect they're stealing this, the same thing's happening coming into town.
You know.
Coming into town.
Everybody on their cell phones got this thing called Waze or whatever.
Right.
And the first one to see is the cops, they're going to hit the button, so the cops are there and everybody's little angels. Okay, we go home, it's like an eighty hours, it's like forty hours, we go home.
And that's why I did what I did. That's why I sat out there and ran radar. I, I know, I know the game that people play with the speed and this is.
With the data he's got? With the data he has, be something you can send to Indot as well or not?
I think you'd want to take your own.
Tell them about it, you know, we document your timing. Did you still have that?
Oh, I've got, I've got way more than what I posted. I, I only posted that because the first car on, on the film that night, me and Rick were standing there, was forty-nine miles an hour. And I was like, well, I'll go ahead and I'll post this and ask people to slow down. And it was, I mean, I don't know if anybody got on there and read that stuff, but that was insane. People were threatening to come to my house and welcome me to Oldenburg. But you apparently don't know how things work around here. I was like, why don't you explain it to me on here? How things work around here?
Do anybody, or those in town may look at is put signage, uh, no electronic Jake braking or electronic braking. The guy that was doing it all the time, we probably got him moved out of town and he don't go over there.
The I M I guys are doing it.
Who's?
The I M I guys are doing it. They, they just blew through. Today I got, I got one of the cement trucks, one of the big concrete trucks. Going through there forty-five, I think it was forty-five miles an hour is what he was at.
Again, would, uh, do I have to approve that sign? And Bill, when you, when you send the data into Indot?
Please.
When you send that data into Indot?
Yes.
Also ask them to, to put a Jake brake sign up both ends of town. They'll, they'll have to approve it.
Okay.
We can buy one and put them up, but they'd have to approve it or they, they would probably end up putting it up.
Definitely. If we put it up without their permission, they'll come by and just take it down.
Right.
I'll put that slow children in line sign up.
I have no problem going to I M I and tell them up there about their drivers.
Yeah, I would imagine that the I M I guys will, will ask, they'll tell their drivers to chill.
Well, if you all should do one up, I can stop right there. Sometimes you're up near Romanoff's old place.
Sure.
And I have no problem stopping or going to bear a warning.
Yeah, they're, they're not the only ones though.
They're not the only ones.
No, mo- most of it is, is just. Everyday traffic coming through, but you get one of these. New Suburbans that weigh thirty-five hundred pounds, you come over that hill at forty-nine mile an hour. You're not going to stop if I'm in the road or pulling out of my driveway. It scares me to death. I can't think, I gotta weigh whether I can take my kids to McDonald's or not.
Do we have any, well, Indot will have, will have statistics about any traffic accidents that have occurred there. And I'll take that into account as well.
There have been three in the last, since the beginning of the year. One of them took the whole last sixty-foot section of my fence out.
I'll take that into account. The, the actual accidents will carry much more weight than anything else.
Indot can pull up the factory reports and see how many accidents has been worked there.
Exactly.
Or will people stay here until the police got there?
Yeah, they didn't stay. They had a truck come and jerk them out of my yard, tore another twenty-foot yard up. But it's full of cars.
Police report was made, but Indot will have it.
Yeah.
All right, Bill, um, I'll ask you then in July meeting, what you, what you found out from Indot? What kind of response you get?
I hope we're going to respond.
Yeah, I know, I know how it works, but.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Anything else? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second? All right, thank you all for coming.
I appreciate you guys taking the time.
Oh, no problem.
And I have another question maybe for you, Mr. Calvin.
Yes, sir.